I'm very well, how are you today?
I'm doing well, I'm doing well. I'm doing well. Always looking for-
Councilman?
Always looking for additional opportunities.
Absolutely. Glad to see everyone here with us today.
I'm doing well, the, uh... Mr. Hart? Okay, it's, uh... 1:29, if my clerk is correct, it's now 1:30. So, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Albert Williams, chairman of the Planning Commission. Let me first of all, uh, welcome, uh, Councilman Woodard and, uh, Councilman Lisa Burke. Uh, if she's here, I haven't seen her initials pop up yet. Uh, I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Thank God, the Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Please note, the meeting will be recorded and feature public comments. Commissioners are asked to mute their microphones when you're not speaking, and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina Jackson, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present, and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood?
I'm present, thank you.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present. This public meeting of Planning Commission is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Northam's March to 12th, 2020 executive order, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of COVID-19. A quorum of the Commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the city's Planning Department webpage, with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can allow, can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comments, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app, as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the members of the January 5th, 2021 public hearing, do any commissions have any corrections or changes to the minutes? If so, please state your name before stating the changes. If there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion to approve the minutes. Motion and a second.
Commissioner, she have moved for acceptance of the minutes as presented?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Sherry Thaxton.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the January 5th, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled public hearing is Tuesday, March the 2nd, 2021, at 1:30 PM. The public hearing will be held in Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their March the 9th, 2021, or March to 23rd, 2021 virtual meeting, or as otherwise noted. We also ask that you mute your microphones when you're not speaking, and to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments. Our first public hearing item is Z-20-10 Downtown Robert C. Barclay IV of Cooper Spong &amp; Davis PC, request to rezone approximately 5.38 acres at Zero Effingham Street from downtown D1-T5 sub-district to general mixed-use GMU, in order to develop a self-storage facility. The applicant is concurrently requesting a use permit for the self-storage, for the self-storage facility use UP-20-11. The featured land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, PRHA, and is further described as Tax Map 29, Parcel 9. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time?
Regina, do you want to read both of them, since my presentation will be on both of them?
Uh, yes, I can. Our next item is the Z-20-10. Hold on a minute, girl, you just got me all messed up here. The next item, UP-20-11 Downtown Robert C. Barclay IV of Cooper Spong &amp; Davis PC, request a use permit for a three-story, 103,350 square foot, climate-controlled self-service storage facility with 793 units at Zero Effingham Street. The property is concurrently zoned downtown D1 in the T5 sub-district. The applicant is concurrently requesting a rezoning of the property to the general mixed-use GMU zoning district Z-20-10. The featured land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, and is further described as Tax Map 29, Parcel 9. Staff coordinator is Julie Chopp.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. Uh, this is Julie Chopp, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This rezoning application is being considered concurrently with a use permit application to build a self-service storage facility. My presentation will focus on both applications. Approval of the use permit is contingent upon approval of the rezoning request. Each application will require a separate vote. The rezoning and use permit applications before you today involve a 5.38 acre parcel located at Zero Effingham Street. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property from downtown D1-T5 to general mixed-use. A self-service storage facility also requires a use permit in the GMU zoning district. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting a use permit for the proposed use. The property is currently vacant, and was formerly the site of the Washington Park Housing Development. Lead-contaminated soil was found on the site, and in 1990, the EPA declared the site a national superfund site. The property is in the AE flood zone, and is also encumbered with several utility easements. The surrounding area is a mix of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. A large parking area for semi-trailers, zoned D1 SD, is located to the east of Zero Effingham Street. To the north of this subject property is vacant land and the stormwater facility for the trailer parking, zoned D1-T5 and SD. To the south of the property is Portsmouth Fire Station Number 1, which is zoned D1-T4. Further south are retail shops, zoned GMUK. A retail store with gasoline sales and residential dwellings are located to the west of the property, across Effingham Street, and are zoned D1-T4. The proposed three-story, 103,350 square feet, climate-controlled self-service storage facility will include 793 units, two elevators, and will not contain a residence. The office is estimated to operate from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and the facility will provide access to the units 24 hours a day via a security access system. The proposed self-service storage facility will employ approximately six to eight people. The conceptual site plan shows two access points to the site, one off of Effingham Street, and another at the southeast corner of the parcel from Green Street and Brighton Street. Loading areas are displayed on the east and south of the building. 21 parking spaces are planned along the eastern and southern building facades. A six-foot solid fence is proposed along the southern property line to replace the existing chain-like fence. In order to meet flood zone requirements, the facility will be elevated seven feet to the required level above the floodplain. If approved, the storage facility will be developed in compliance with the city's excavation requirements for AVEX superfund sites. This elevation shows the west facade facing Effingham Street. The proposed materials consist of textured stone veneer and non-reflective glazing, in compliance with the use-specific standards. This slide also shows the south elevation facing the fire station. The east elevation faces the trailer parking lot, and the north elevation on the bottom of the slide faces the vacant lot and the interstate on ramp. The general mixed-use zoning district is an appropriate classification for this property. The proposed zoning to GMU eliminates the urban downtown requirements, and allows for a more typical suburban-related form of development. A rezoning of this property to accommodate the proposed use is suitable, as the superfund designation limits the development potential of the site. Staff has determined that the proposed GMU rezoning and the proposed self-service storage facility use will be compatible with the existing surrounding land uses, and is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of both the rezoning request and the use permit request with the recommended conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions before the applicant presents on the applications.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions and or comments from Ms. Chopp, relative to Z-20-10 or UP-20-11. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Chopp, I've got, uh, I guess just a question, that's almost more of a comment. Am I correct in thinking that, that the superfund designation severely limits what could be built on this property, um, in addition to the flood zone designation? Is that correct?
Uh, yes. I, I will let the applicant speak more on that, but there, there are strict requirements, uh, that the city has, um, has in place for, for the development of this property. So, it would, um, create difficulties for, for some uses.
And, and that's probably why it's sat vacant for some 30 years, correct?
Yes, the, the site has a, has a number of encumbrances. Um, there's the number of utility easements that, um, that also limit the development of the site. It's in the, the flood zone. Um, so, yeah, there are a lot of, um, there have been a lot of obstacles in the past to developing this site.
Good, thank you very much.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No, sir, I don't have any questions right at this moment.
Commissioner G?
I have none at this moment, sir.
Commissioner Coleman?
None at this time.
Commissioner Page?
No questions at the moment.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this, we will now begin the public hearing on item Z-20-10 and item UP-20-11. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions, and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments, and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for Z-20-10 and UP-20-11, please come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Madam Secretary, this is Meg Pittinger. Just a point of order, we're going to do the public hearing separately. So, we're going to, we'll do Z-20-10 first, and then do the public hearing for UP-20-11.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, members of the Commission, um, and staff. My name is Robert Barclay, and my business address is 200 High Street, Suite 500, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704. And I am the representative for Safe Store Real Estate Company, which is a national developer of climate-controlled self-storage facilities. And they have a particular focus on identifying and utilizing, uh, sites that have a, a large number of challenges, such as this site. And they have a very successful track record in redeveloping and putting back into use properties that have environmental issues or other problems. I want to thank the planning staff, and, uh, say that we are in full agreement with the findings of their report, and any of the proposed conditions, uh, they put forward. Um, just briefly, this, this project is really about adaptive reuse of a difficult property. As was stated in the staff presentation, the property is currently owned by the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. So, it's currently tax-exempt, and is vacant. So, it's not producing any tax revenue, nor is it providing any useful service to the public. In fact, it's fenced off, and cannot be accessed. It is the site of the former Washington Park housing project, and back in the 1990s, it was discovered that there was lead contamination in the soil. And so, uh, the property was declared a superfund site. Uh, the tenants were relocated, and the, uh, housing project was then demolished. Uh, the demolition was completed in 2006. Then for another three years, there was an extensive cleanup of the property that was undertaken under the auspices of, uh, supervision by the Environmental Protection Agency. And, uh, then the, after the, uh, some of the contamination was removed, the, the primary remediation covering the property in a cap of various materials. And I have a later speaker who will address that in more detail. Uh, but anyway, um, then a series of deed restrictions were placed on the property by the Environmental Protection Agency, which prevents its use for a large number of potential uses. Effectively, no residential uses permitted, and a large number of business uses are also prohibited. Self-storage, however, is a use that can work on the site. And, uh, again, Safe Store has a, a, a long history of working with these kind of sites. Is very familiar with how to engineer a product that is, uh, both safe and useful, and restores the, uh, the property to use by the community. Uh, and, and as previously mentioned, in addition to the environmental issues with this site, it's in the 100-year floodplain. Um, that means the, uh, site is going to have, the land's going to actually be raised before the building can be put on the site. That's a great deal of expense, and there are very few uses that would justify that kind of expense. And, uh, there's a stormwater culvert running through the middle of the property, and several other utility easements surrounding it, which really severely limit the footprint of a potential building. Uh, Safe Store's team has engineered, uh, and designed solutions to all of these problems, and is going to be able to build a, a large, state-of-the-art, climate-controlled storage facility for which there is a great deal of demand in the downtown Portsmouth area. Um, last night, we had the opportunity to meet with the Brighton Prentice Park Civic League, uh, and we made a good presentation to them. Uh, so, we would be, be happy for you all to reach out to those folks, uh, find out if any of them have comments, particularly as it moves on to City Council. And also, um, I communicated with the Old Town South Civic League. Uh, they did not want to have a meeting on this, but we did forward all our materials to them, and were available for any questions. So, we, we've done a fair amount of community outreach. Uh, so, what I'd like to do at this point is now turn over to John Williams. He was a principal with State Safe Store, uh, as one, and is one of the owners, and can speak in much more detail about the proposed project, and the things that they do for the communities that they come into. So, I'll, I'll conclude my remarks with that, and, uh, if, Ms., uh, if Ms. Jackson, if you'd call on Mr. Williams.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-10. Our first registered speaker is John Williams. If you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record. Press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Great. Uh, I appreciate y'all's time today, and certainly appreciate your, um, ingenuity in figuring out how to, how to hold these hearings, uh, in this difficult time, uh, with, that, that we're seeing across the nation now. But, so, I'm John Williams, I own a civil engineering surveying company located in Athens, Georgia. Uh, I also am one of the owners of Safe Store, as Rob mentioned. Uh, and, um, my company does all the, the entitlement work and permitting for the, for the facilities that we build. Um, Safe Store's been a, a, a company now for over three and a half years. Uh, we've got 31 projects in, uh, the pipeline of some sort, um, including, I think, 15 or so that are up and going and, and leasing at the current time. Uh, we're really excited when we can find a site like this. Uh, if you, if you were to check out our website, you'll see that we have a community page on there, and really think that, you know, we have a unique ability, given our, our history and our backgrounds, uh, to be able to work with very difficult sites within a community. Uh, we assembled a team of engineers, geotechnical engineers, environmental scientists, environmental attorneys. Uh, we've had dozens of calls with the EPA representatives and local EPD representatives, and, um, you know, we believe that we can, we can take this site that has been now, uh, as Rob mentioned, off tax rolls, uh, and, and, and just laying fallow now for, I guess, close to 20 years, um, and be able to reinvigorate it, uh, bring a product to the neighborhood that is architecturally pleasing. Uh, we go over and above on the landscape architectural side of the product, uh, of our products. Um, we know that, uh, we are going to be adding, uh, some additional fill-in there to help protect the community even further from the lead contamination that was found on the site originally. Um, and then, you know, as, as I told, as I said last night at the meeting, at the community meeting, at the neighborhood meeting we were at, um, you know, Safe Store does want to be a good member of the community, not just in, in, in with us, giving back from a tax standpoint, uh, but also, uh, we like to find a charitable organization within the community and allow them to have, uh, three of our units to, to be set aside, that they can use at their discretion for families that may have a need, either from a loss of a job, or, uh, relocation, or, uh, even a, a fire, a, a house being damaged from a fire. So, we do that in every building that we have. Uh, we also set aside a, a 10-by-10 space inside of our buildings that can be used for a police substation, if, if the community desires, or just a community meeting room or space, uh, in, in every building. So, uh, I hope you guys appreciate and like our architecture, and what we're, what we're bringing to the community here. Um, it'll take about a 12 month, it'll be about 12 months to build it, once we get our permits, uh, and then we'll be up and going. Uh, so, um, if I can answer any questions for you, I'd be happy to.
Madam Secretary, before we proceed, let me poll the commissioners to see if they have any questions for Mr. Williams or Mr. Barclay. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
No questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Um, I do have a question. When you met with the community, did anybody, um, ask you about the, any potential environmental concerns, with respect to, I, I don't know much about the, the topic, but with vapor, or anything that could harm them utilizing the facility?
They, they, they mentioned, uh, well, no ma'am, not specifically that. What, what we're dealing with here is a lead contamination issue, uh, and lead is, is, we actually, uh, in Atlanta, have a facility that, we have the most lead-contaminated site, as far as I know, on the eastern seaboard. Um, the good thing about lead is, is once you, once you have a cap and a, and a clean filter in place, to get lead contamination, it's actually a touch thing, or a ingestion thing, uh, like you hear about lead paint and things like that. So, vapor is really not an issue for this particular contamination that we're dealing with on the site. Uh, it's really the lead. So, our remediation efforts that we'll be undergoing for the site specifically will not cause any, you know, any concern or harm for the community, and there will be no, no issues with anyone, you know, in the facility, occupying the facility, which is exactly why the EPA, you know, sets different thresholds for environmental levels for, for residential occupancy versus commercial occupancy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have none at this time.
Commissioner Page?
No questions at the moment.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-10. If there is someone else on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, uh, do you have any additional discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second, and we are voting on Z-20-10.
This is-
There's a need for a motion.
This is Sherry Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-20-10.
We have a motion, is there a second?
This is Peter Youngblood. I, I second that with the conditions.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to approve Z-20-10 with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve 20Z-20-10. As I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is approved.
Excuse me, this is just a point of order. There, there are no conditions for the, uh, rezoning application, Z-20-10. The conditions are for the, the use permit application.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, um, motion and a second to approve Z-20-10 by a vote of six to zero. Now, we will now have the public hearing for UP-20-11. The applicant has already, um, re- The applicant has already reviewed that, the, the UP dash twenty eleven, so we're going to now open the public hearing. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone here on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion on UP dash twenty dash eleven? If there are none, the chair is in need of a motion and a second.
This is Commissioner G. I move for acceptance of UP twenty dash eleven with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Page. I second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP dash twenty dash eleven with conditions. And as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is approved six to zero with conditions. Our next items is a rezoning and a use permit, which I will read both captions in the beginning, but we will vote on them separately. The first item is Z dash twenty dash eleven, West Haven, Bruce Watts with Woda Cooper Development, Inc., request the rezoning of thirty-eight twenty King Street and thirty-eight ten Louisa Avenue with conditional, from conditional high-density urban residential URHK to high-density urban residential URH for a four-story, fifty-two-unit multifamily apartment building. The property consists of three-point-one-eight-four acres and the proposed density is sixteen dwelling units per acre. The property is owned by WD Realtor LLC and is identified as Tax Map three oh four parcel nine and Tax Map three fifty-six parcel forty-three. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for the commercial development. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter and staff has recommended a deferral of this application. Our next item, UP dash twenty dash twelve, West Haven, Bruce Watts with Woda Cooper Development, Inc., request a use permit for a four-story, fifty-two-unit multifamily apartment building at thirty-eight twenty King Street and thirty-eight ten Louisa Avenue. The property consists of three-point-one-eight, consists of three-point-one-eight-four acres and the proposed density is sixteen dwelling unit, units per acre. The property is owned to conditional high-density urban residential URHK. The property is owned by WD Realtor LLC and is identified as Tax Map three oh four parcel nine and Tax Map three fifty-six parcel forty-three. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial development. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter and staff recommends deferral of this application. At this time, with the applicant, with the applicant, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Madam Secretary, we're going to have the staff coordinator first.
Staff coordinator? Ari?
Oh yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. As was mentioned on the staff recommendation pages for both the rezoning and use permit applications in your agenda packets, staff was awaiting the wetland delineation for the property. The wetland delineation was received, but the delineation results necessitated substantial amendments to the site plan. The development also appears to be affected by the regulated floodplain. The site plan now requires staff and city department review to complete our evaluation and provide a final staff recommendation. Therefore, staff recommends the deferral of the applicant's rezoning and use permit
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions for Ms. Porter. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
None at this time.
Commissioner Page?
No questions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the applicant for this application, please come forward and present your application
Is the applicant for Z dash twenty dash eleven on the call? If you're on the phone, you might need to press star six to unmute. I don't think any of you are muted, but you might need to unmute. Anybody else, please unmute if you're the applicant would like to speak? Madam Secretary, it does not appear that they are on the call.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item Z dash twenty dash eleven. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments. No, I'm wrong. Okay, if there's anyone on the call who would like to address Z dash twenty dash eleven, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Is Mr. Ed Ewing on the call? You have registered to speak on this item?
I have. I registered earlier today. My name is Ed Ewing. I live at two-twenty-nine Grayson Street, the city of Portsmouth. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for your time and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a lifelong resident of Portsmouth. I've been here over fifty years. I live in the Wooderview area. I grew up in West Haven, which is right in the area this is speaking of. And I've listened to the concerns and the amendments with the floodplans. Living in Wooderview, I also have to contend with floodplans as well as well as wetlands. And this particular parcel of land does sit on, on wetlands in the area. Also, the, I haven't had a chance to see what the drawing rendition of this would be, but in trying to look for the sign that indicated for the zone change, which is required out front of the property, you had to travel down a very narrow gravel, looked like a driveway actually, next to a church and a house to even access the property. I haven't been back there in years since I was a child. But I may be mistaken, but as a child, I thought that the waterline ran parallel with the old railroad tracks that ran through there. And that was one of the reasons why people, when they, when they subsequently removed the railroad tracks, were not allowed to build on those pieces of, of property. I want, would like to see if there's any, any feedback on that. The other thing I'd like to say about that piece of property, this four-story, is that there's no other surrounding buildings in that area that would, that would fit well with that. It's, it's on the outskirts of the midtown area that, that moves into residential area. The closest building that's taller than, than two, two stories, if I recall correctly, is going to be Mayor View Hospital. Also have concerns about parking for that many units. Currently, there's townhouses or condos on King Street between Rodman Avenue and this location where the overflow parking now, the residents and their visitors are parking across the street in the doctor's court over there in that area. So I have several concerns about moving forward with this in there, outside of the floodplans and the wetlands area as far as how it would fit in nicely with the community and, and the parking and so forth. And that's what I would like to, to address today. And I would like to know if anybody has any feedback on the water, the main waterline coming through that area as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Is there any? You're welcome. Is there anyone on the call who would like to address this application? You may come forward. You will have up to five minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Davis and I actually live at five-hundred Louisa Avenue, which is the gentleman, Mr. Ewing, mentioned down the drive that he had to go down. I actually live at that house on the end of the road. Um, I, I have some similar concerns. One being parking and access to a particular complex such as this. You know, this is a one, pretty much one-car lane road. Would it be extended? How is that going to impact the church parking lot that's, that's in this area? How is that going to impact the, the front yards and stuff of the, the two houses that are in this area? Is there going, is that going to be the only access point? Again, like he mentioned, it, it doesn't really fit with the surrounding structures as far as height-wise and, and things like that, but I would kind of like to see what the proposed look of the complex would be. As far as the waterway goes, the only thing I can speak to as far as that is that we do have some, it's titled kind of a creek waterway and it does kind of go around the, that backside of our, our house right there and it does extend to a portion of that, I guess, field for lack of a better word, where they would be looking to put this. So that's, he, he kind of brings up the same questions I have as far as, you know, what the intention is in, in the building structure right there and whether or not it would be a good fit for that size in this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address Z dash twenty dash eleven? Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, we will not close this public hearing. We will keep the public hearing open until next month's Planning Commission meeting. We're going to now move on to the second portion, which is the UP dash twenty.
Madam Secretary?
Yeah, yes. Okay, pardon me. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioners, you've heard Ms. Porter's presentation and the recommendation is for a deferral of this application of Z dash twenty dash eleven. Commissioners, are there any additional comments or questions? If not, the chair is in need of a motion and a second.
This is Sherri Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to defer Z dash twenty dash eleven.
Commissioners, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'd like to, I'd like to second that because honestly, we've got too many unanswered questions to do anything else but defer this until we can get more information.
Thank you, Commissioner Youngblood. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second to defer Z dash twenty dash eleven.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is deferred by a vote of six to zero. Okay, our, our next application is UP dash twenty dash twelve and we're opening the public hearing. If there's anyone on the call who would like to address UP dash twenty dash twelve, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
I have my same concerns for this as I did the last, because we're separating them on the item.
Sir, can you speak? Can you say, state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, this is Ed Ewing again, two-twenty-nine Grayson. I spoke a minute ago. And just for the record, I wanted to be clear that I, I have the same concerns with this as I did for the last, as they're, can join but listen to separately.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address UP dash twenty dash Appearing to be none. Again, we will keep the public hearing open until the next month meeting and we will be voting electronically. Mr. Williams?
Commissioners, if there is no further discussion, we need a motion for UP dash twenty dash twelve and the recommendation is for a deferral.
This is Commissioner G.
This is Chairman, this is Commissioner Page. Oh, go ahead. It's all right, go ahead.
Commissioner G, I move for a deferral of UP, oh gosh, where'd it go, twenty dash twelve?
Yes.
Commissioners, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second. This is Commissioner Page.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second for UP dash twenty dash twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is deferred by a vote of six to zero.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion that we need to have today? Mr. Baldwin, is there any further business?
No, Mr. Chairman, no additional business from the staff.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Great seeing you all.